Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 3, 2017 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Alderman. Please join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding Alderman Anderson will be late, correct?
Alderman Anderson will be a little bit late, thank you. She'd like to be excused until then.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Beer.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Gurman.
Alderman Genotazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Alderman Smith.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale. Alderman Vitale is here. Fourteen.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comments. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Alderman. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the Board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the Board can do so at this time. I guess no one wants to address the Board at this time. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman held on March 6, 2017.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Alderman Golden? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Four, we did not have a special organizational meeting to consider. Item Number Five, Chairman's Report. I'd just like to thank everyone that marched in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Marty Hardeman Parade. I think we had a very good turnout, and the spectators as well. I think everybody had a great time in the march, and the weather held out, just for Great job, Mr. Alderman Hardeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Agenda Item Number Six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Mayor, is there a report?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, as this meeting begins, I do see some members from the Parent Leadership Training Institute in the rear of the auditorium, and some that are walking in as we speak. It is a fantastic program that the City of Milford offers to all of our citizens. It's a program run through our Health Department that really does generate a lot of interest, and it's, again, a fantastic program for those who want to do it in years to come. So, here are members of the mighty PLTI class of 2017. But, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, if you do have questions, I am here to answer any of those, and with that, I respectfully request your consideration in action for those items listed 8A through 8I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the request for the attached Assumption of Risk and Waiver of Claims Agreement for firefighter training.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request pursuant to CGS 8-24I to authorize the Connecticut Green Bank, its affiliates, designees, and/or assigned to site, own, operate, and maintain a solar array at Joseph A. Born High School, Jonathan Law High School, East Shore Middle School, and Mathewson Elementary School, to authorize the Board of Education to take all steps necessary to effectuate the installation and operation of such solar arrays, including, without limitation, granting access licenses for each of the schools, and signing all documents, and to authorize the mayor or his designee to take all steps necessary on behalf of the city to assist the Board of Education to effectuate the installation and operation of such solar arrays, including signing all documents.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to whomever. First of all, what's the definition of an array? And where are the solar panels going to be put? How many are there going to be? And what is the advantage of the number of solar panels or arrays? Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. We do have a distinguished group of experts. I don't know if they know the Webster definition of an array, but they can take a stab at it. As you folks know, the City of Milford actually owns the Board of Education schools, and because of that, we have to be involved with any type of agreement, a lease or otherwise, when it involves an agreement between, you know, the city and a private organization. In this case, the State of Connecticut has given the city and the school system some incentives to go solar, and we are working with a private company, or contracting with a private company, to utilize, you know, the leverage that we have as a municipality with incentives to put solar on our roofs. The Board of Ed is doing it at several schools that are listed in your packet. The City of Milford, you've already seen this in past agendas, we're doing it at our library and at one of our sewage treatment plants, but they are up right now. We have the Board of Ed's attorney, Mr. Studer, as well as the contractor for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the Board of Alderman, Board Member Vitale. The answers to your questions are that the Board of Education is doing this for two principal reasons. One is it will result in significant savings on electricity costs, and two, it obviously reduces the city's carbon footprint, so there's certainly a very strong ecological benefit as well. There's going to be, the number of arrays is going to vary, depends upon, you know, the school, obviously. In total, there's probably somewhere around 2,900 divided among the four schools. They're all going to be on the rooftop, so when we talk about an array, it's simply a series of photoelectric or photovoltaic solar panels that will be essentially linked together on the roof of a school, and then eventually connected through a meter to the internal electrical system on each of the buildings. That's my layperson's explanation. I have some experts with me who could probably get into a little bit more kilowatts and so forth, but...
And an array is, in definition, are all of those solar panels, or are there fifteen in an array of...
I think, in my mind, the totality of the system is an array.
Okay, thank you. And the other question would be, how were these schools chosen for this array, for the photovoltaic arrays?
Well, to the best of my knowledge, there were several criteria, probably the chiefmost being the fact that they are all schools, maybe the exception of Mathewson, where this Board has approved some capital improvements, and the Board of Education's approved some capital improvements over the last few years. So, these are schools which essentially satisfy the criteria for a good roof.
And what about the integrity, and the integrity of the roofs at this point, the weight of these?
That's all been looked at by engineers, and I'm told that structurally as well as electrically, everything is copasthetic, correct?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. Each roof has to be less than five years old. That's one of the criteria. Another criteria for this particular state incentive is the size of the roof. This was for larger projects. There's a separate ZREC program that was offered later on by DEEP that allows for applications for smaller sized roofs. This is for the schools that had larger roofs.
And at that point, when you're completed with the array of panels, what percentage of the electric bill or the electricity will be satisfied by those solar panels?
Again, it depends upon, by school, because certain schools, different schools have different electric load requirements. So, essentially, the number of panels in a particular school array is a function of the size of the school, the level of insulation, which means exposure to the sun, and essentially, there are different percentages, all of which are significant, but I don't have the exact percentages here.
Because I would assume that knowing those schools and the positions they're in, Mathewson or the high schools, it's all, East Shore Middle School, there's got to be already tabulated some type of percentage savings. There has to be.
There is.
And I'd like to know.
This is Sam Wahab, and he will answer your question with the investor developer.
Hi, how are you? To answer your question, those four schools, anywhere from 35% to 65% of the electric bill will be offset, and that just frankly depends on how much roof space there was available on each particular school. And the reason those four were chosen first was, they have four, I think of, I think there's 14 total schools, those are four of the top five in terms of usage in the city. And the city, as the mayor had already said, the city had already applied for the ZREC, so those are the ones that we needed to build first to make sure that the ZREC stays in place.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. There are upfront costs, when I read through the letter here, that there is some substantial improvement that will be done and some upfront cost for the Board of Education. Is it...
Not that...
None, so there's no cost?
No, you're asking, there's no upfront cost. All the costs are incurred by us, Davis Hill Development.
Thank you.
Alderman Golden.
Thank you. Through you. Is there going to be any battery backup with those?
At this time, this is strictly a solar array. There is no storage. We can't, that is something we can always go back and do. This particular project is also storage, I mean, all solar, sorry.
And the inverters, where are they going to be?
I think, Pat could probably... I think all of them are going to be on the roof. Is that right? Yeah, all of them are going to be on the roof.
There are inverter that turns it on, though, when you switch it on. Where are they going to be in terms of the building?
The inverters are all on the roof.
And they do witness tests up on the roof with UI?
Yeah, they make sure that, you know, Pat can speak to that, but they do go on the roof. We've done this, and I think everyone, he's going to come speak.
Because the inverters I've ever seen have been on the side of buildings. That's why I'm asking. Because I just don't want students to get their hands near it because that's active.
Absolutely. This is Pat Lewis from All Electric, will be doing the install for Davis Hill Development. So, all the solar inverters will be on the roof. They'll be inaccessible to children.
Okay.
So, UI does go on the roof with us, do a witness test one time when we commission the system. Yep. Yeah?
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. If the city, if this is, this whole program isn't going to cost the city any money, but the city's going to receive more or less some free energy, who's making the money on this?
Well, there is no upfront cost for the construction of the array. The only, the part that the city agrees to is the city agrees to purchase any electricity that the array produces from Davis Hill Development.
So, the city, city isn't getting free energy as it's put in here. We're going to have to buy it from you.
No, the city's not buying anything. This is the Board of Education. The Board of Education is going to install the arrays on four specific schools. The electricity generated by those arrays, as they're struck by the sun, is free to the Board of Education. That's electricity that they would otherwise have to buy from UI or some other supplier. So, there's a net savings on the Board of Education utility budget.
That's what I was led to believe, but will the solar panels produce more, we'll say, energy than the school needs?
No. No, as Sam said, I think there's going to be a certain percentage.
I think the most, in the biggest array, it's 55% to 65%. There's just not enough roof space. The schools have very high usage. And in situations where there's lower usage, we designed the array to never, it doesn't make sense financially for anyone to build one that is, that's going to overpower a school.
My last question, Mr. Chairman, would be, if the Board of Education isn't putting any money into this, and they're getting some of their electricity bills cut, why are you doing this for free, then?
I don't understand your question, Alderman Bevan.
Well, the solar panels cost money.
You're asking why we're doing it for free?
Yes.
Oh, well, we're not doing it for free. So, what happens is, we, yeah, I wish we were doing it for free, sorry. So, we, obviously, we will charge you for the electricity at a discounted rate than UI would normally charge you, and the ZRECs that the Board of Ed currently owns will be assigned to us because we will be the owner of the array. And the ZRECs are, we get paid for every thousand kilowatt hours produced by the array, we get one ZREC. And one ZREC, you know, could be worth anywhere, I believe, in this situation, from $65 to $85. So, we're going to, that's where we get our money from, is the ZRECs and the monetization of the ZRECs and the electricity charges.
Okay, just one follow-up. I'm still confused, as one gentleman says, we're going to have to buy the energy, and the other gentleman says, we don't have to buy it. Which one of you is telling me...
Then one of us, some misunderstanding, that the city, when I say, I'm distinguishing between the city and the Board of Education.
No, when I talk about the Board of Education, that is a part of the city. So, the Board of Education is getting this energy without paying anything for it?
No, no, then I misspoke. Then the Board of Education pays, as Mr. Wahab just indicated, on a per-kilowatt-hour basis. So, as they use the electricity, they do pay, as they're paying currently, they just get a reduced rate.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alderman Golden.
As you can tell, I know something about solar. How much are they paying per kilowatt, then, if they're paying...
What the, the solar rate would be eight and a half cents per kilowatt hour for those four schools.
And how much do you know, how much are we getting paid, how much do we pay UI then?
Currently, now, each school's a little different because of their usage and they're on peak, but it's about 16 to 17 cents all-in.
Okay, and then if we're paying eight cents, for how long will that be?
It's a 20-year contract.
Oh, so it'll be for the term of that?
Yes.
And it won't go up from there?
No escalator.
There's no escalator on that?
No, we agreed to no escalator.
Very good, thank you.
Alderman Genotazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening. Sam?
Yes.
Question for you. You said it's a 20-year contract. In the interim or during the life of the contract, if for some reason the Board of Ed had to access the roof and make a repair, how do you handle a situation like that? Are you responsible for the labor to remove the panel, or is there access to the roof underneath the panel?
There is no access underneath the panel. So, in a situation where we own the array, so if the Board has, if the Board has something to do that is not solar-related, they can come to us, and we will work with them to figure out how to take it off the roof. We're actually currently doing that in Fairfield, for example. We have to do that on a feeder. There is sometimes a cost there, but also, in the contract, there's built in, the city has the right to remove the panels for a certain period of time, and we have no recourse. And it's cumulative, it adds up year over year. So, if in year five, for example, you suddenly need to do something, you can take it down for two or three months, and we have no recourse, and that's kind of built into the payment. So, there may be a cost in terms of we're having to take it off and put it on, but usually it's offset by the, by the fact that you guys have built in a credit because we haven't had to do it every month or something like that. But obviously, if there's like a real roof issue, and every month they need access, and we have to take the array down, there could be some cost.
And just to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman, what if the roof, the integrity of the roof, after these are installed, do you do an inspection and make sure that the integrity of the roof is 100%?
Absolutely. So, before we start, there's a structural analysis done. When we're done, there's a structural analysis done, and then in terms of roof warranty, before anything is put on, the roof manufacturer comes out, makes sure that the warranty is in good standing before we do anything, and then after we're done, he comes back out and re-inspects it to ensure that the roof warranty is still in good standing. So, there should be no effect to the roof.
Thank you.
Sam, I had two questions. Number one, I was a volunteer fireman for 25 years. Firemen, God forbid, there's a fire up there where firemen have to go up on the roof.
Yep.
Obviously, those panels are live electricity at the time. What is there, is there a disconnect?
Yeah, I'm going to have Pat speak on that, but there's something called rapid shutdown for that very reason.
Yes. So, for when the firemen go up, there is a local disconnect near the utility room that is labeled solar PV utility disconnect to safe off any power before they go on the roof, just like they may do with utility. When you go up on the roof, we designed walkways for all the firemen and setbacks, so there's access around the roofs, around any sky windows, that's all code these days, to have access for, you know, full location around the roof. Per the 2014 National Electro Code, there's rapid shutdown requirements now, so, you know, in case of any problem or emergency, it has to shut down in a certain millisecond. So, that's built into these systems as well.
And they're, obviously, they're all trained, and they're all notified of that?
Fire marshal does full review on all systems. Yep.
The other question I have, let's say, within 10 years, we have to close one of those schools, what's the procedure at that point?
First of all, Mr. Chairman, that's not contemplated, but secondly, there is a provision where essentially, there's a termination payment that the Board of Education would make for the privilege of essentially buying out the remainder of the term.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Sam. Alderman Golden.
Damage done by students that are, maybe they're throwing a ball or something like that, or something happens to...
If a panel breaks.
Yeah.
We own it, so it's kind of, kind of our problem. It's not the school's problem.
Even if it's weather damage?
Yeah, exactly right.
And also, do you have what's called an ASBULT done by an engineer after the work is completed?
Yeah, in order to get our closure of the permits and everything, we have to submit ASBULTs and three-line diagrams and a pretty substantial engineering packet.
Alderman Beer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. If I could just do a simple analysis for myself, so basically, there are zero costs to the Board of Education for installation, purchase of the array. We are going to save roughly 50% of the electrical cost on 35% to 65% of the usage on a monthly basis. And it's a 20-year term, set at eight and a half cents per kilowatt through the whole length of the term.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that the savings is monthly, only because, as we know with this weather, some months are better than others, so I would say, on the whole, over a year, that's what you're going to find. Some months are not going to, you're always going to save, but obviously, if there's a ton of snow or if it's super rainy, it's not going to be as great as it will be in, you know, April and May.
So, it sounds like a no-brainer. I mean, it makes kind of perfect sense, in my opinion, but, thank you.
Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So, just to clarify, just what are some dollars on an annual basis of net savings after all said and done?
Without having it in front of me, I believe, for those four schools, the savings over, we kind of look at it over the 20-year period of time, over the 20-year period of time when you, assuming there's a small price escalation from the utility, which usually does happen, as I'm sure everyone knows, the savings are in, you know, high six figures to low seven figures. I don't want to give an exact number because I don't have them in front of me, but they're significant, to say the least.
So, roughly, on an annual basis?
Over those four schools, I would say, on an annual basis, you're looking at, you know, call it 90, you know, anywhere from 75,000 to 125,000. But again, you know, I'd really have to, we'd have to dig into it. I don't have the paper in front of me from that.
All right, thank...
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Just another question on the arrays. Is that going to, are the arrays going to take the full footprint of the roof?
You want to talk about the design?
So, it extremely varies based upon school and the usage that each school has, so the answer is no, they're not going to take the full footprint of the school.
What you're saying, depending on the usage the school has, you don't know what that usage is, really?
We know what the usage of the schools are for those four.
At this point?
Yeah, we have it all documented, and we did an engineering design to do those layouts based upon the usage of the school.
So, you could have numbers as to what each school is saving, because you already know what their usage is at this particular point in time?
Correct, we just don't have them in front of us.
Oh, okay. The other thing is, does it affect the snow loads on the roofs?
It does, and the snow loads are already designed into the roof, so our solar, weight of our solar panels is going to be added to that snow load design of the structural analysis. So, the snow load isn't any greater than it was before our array is on there.
Just to personal experience, I've had dealings in each of the, in some of those schools, and I sit on the permanent schools, and we do new roofs. In fact, we're doing new roofs right now on many buildings, and no matter how many new roofs we put on, there's always leakage. You're never going to have 100% tight roof.
Yep.
And so, when you go into those roofs and you install those panels, obviously, you're disrupting the roof. And is that going to, in any way, add to what we already know that there is leakage on a lot of our roofs?
Well, if there's already leakage on your roof, installing solar is not going to prevent that. It's still going to do the same leakage. But we're doing a non-penetrating system, so we're not actually penetrating your roof, it's just sitting on your roof with a weighted load that's built into the structural analysis, so we're not adding any possibility for extra leakage. But when we do, before we put the solar down, we do bring the roofing manufacturers out there for a pre and post inspection, and if they want any seams filled or anything like that before we put the solar down, we do that before our install.
So, you're not penetrating the roof? Because no matter what we do with roofs, you know, it's always leaking, because they're flat roofs, and that's...
Correct. It's a full non, yeah, full non-penetrating system, and we also stay clear of roof drains, so we're not affecting those, so we will not cover a roof drain.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you. Quick question. One, do you have to clean those panels off periodically for them to be most energy efficient?
To be most energy efficient, we have what's called an O&amp;M contract. Again, it's part of our cost, operation, maintenance, and part of that is, every year, there will be a deep cleaning. But in general, you don't really need to clean them, but, you know, we run studies based on what the expected production is versus the actual, and if there is a dip in there, we'll go out and check it to make sure that there's not an issue.
And the other question is, if we had a hurricane or very high winds, at what point are we, can we, I realize it's your equipment, but are they like hurricane-proof? I'm wondering how you get them to stay on that roof.
I think it's 110 in this area.
The way, they, I was just asking what the, they're rated to stay, we believe it's 110 miles an hour. It's certainly at least 110. I thought it was a little more, but, I mean, yeah, I mean, they definitely meet all local code, you know, over 110, I think.
How do you keep them on the roof if you don't penetrate the roof?
So, they sit in a tray system, so it's a plastic or metal tray that the array will connect into, and then cement ballast blocks go onto that tray. Before we put those trays down, we put what's called a slip sheet, which is a piece of roofing material to protect that tray from sitting on the roof directly. So, if it moves at all, it's moving on that sheet as opposed to on the roof membrane itself.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So another way to reduce costs is to reduce the load. What's being done as far as lighting and LEDs and stuff to reduce the cost? And has that been done, or is that in the works as well?
I'm Jim Wedder, I'm the Energy Director for the Milford Public Schools. What we are currently doing, Foreign High and Jonathan Law both have all the exterior lighting that's now LED, and we're starting to work on the interior. But in all, 14 of our buildings, wherever we're replacing lighting or substantially upgrading lighting, we bring it in, we bring it up to LED standard. And I think, as you all know, we run a very strict energy savings program, which currently saves the Milford Public Schools in the area of 28% over when we started this in 2010. So, you know, we do everything along with, the solar array, you might say, is our next steps in energy savings. So, you know, we're definitely on top of doing LED lighting.
So you haven't done it yet, you're just kinda replacing as things go?
We've done, we've done, we've done quite a bit of LED lighting. This past summer, we did all the parking lot lights at Foreign High, Jonathan Law. We did most of the hallway lighting at Foreign. We have the cafeteria, the media centers were done at both schools, the pool was done at Foreign. Both gyms and the auxiliary gyms were done at both the high schools. So, yeah, I mean, we're really moving forward on doing this.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding cooperative bidding and purchasing.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Casey.
Thank you. Through you, I guess, to the mayor or the city attorney, I know he's just absent right now. But it seems that this allows for competitive bidding, I guess discretionary competitive bidding. What's the necessity? Can the purchase agent do this already, or like, what's the background? And what's the process right now that the purchasing agent uses?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Casey, this allows us to tag on to other competitive bidding around the state. For example, the city of Middletown has already implemented this local resolution, and they were already able to tag on to the city of Milford's bids, when we put out the bids for our garbage trucks, the ones that we recently purchased, they were able to tag on to that bid. So it allows us to tag on or utilize other competitive municipal bids from around the state. And obviously, these days, when everything is more accessible because of the internet and the connectivity of information, we have more information about what the market rate is and what the competitive bids are out there, or our purchasing department does at least.
And just to follow up, does a purchase need to normally go through a competitive bidding process, or what is the current status right now?
So anything over $25,000 has to go out to bid. We are already able to tag on to the state bid. But anything else has to go out through a competitive bidding process. And there's a cost associated with that. Even, you know, the advertising for that is usually thousands of dollars for each bid.
And this appears to be discretionary, so it's up to the purchasing agency, agent, if it's necessary to go through competitive bidding process? Is that correct?
It's not gonna be prescriptive. We're not gonna have to tag on to other municipal bids, but it will give us an extra tool, the toolkit, that if there is a bid out there that comes in at a price where we think is more competitive than anything we could put out ourselves, it gives us that extra option to get that at a lower cost.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request authorizing the acceptance of the attached FY 2014 Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Agreement, number EMB-2015-FM-E002, in the amount of... In the amount of $113,620.19 for the elevation and the residential structure located at 17 Silver Street, and to authorize the mayor, the finance director, the director of community development, and his city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the mayor or to the city attorney. Part of this, it tells us that the sub-grantee is the city of Milford. The grantee match, is that the homeowner?
The city is the, the grantee and the sub-grantee would be the homeowner.
So the city is paying over $12,000 for this?
No. The homeowner only gets, I think, approximately 75% of the overall cost, and it's a reimbursable grant. So until they submit invoices, they aren't receiving the reimbursable amount. We do have Julie Nash, our Community Development Director here, who administers the FEMA-based grants, the Hazard Mitigation Grants, including these three new ones. But the city is essentially acting as a pass-through.
The city has no cost obligation, other than us administering the grant.
Thank you very much.
Is there any more discussion? Alderman Shaw.
Just quickly, Julie, how many people can you, are still outstanding on the Hazard Mitigation Grant in Milford?
Oh, gosh. Okay. Well, these are our latest three. We have three in construction, and we have probably four that are deciding what to do at this point, and we have five in closeout.
The program is closed, obviously, for anybody, new people coming in, so...
Right. There's no new grant applications. This is an FMA grant, these latest round. The first HMGP were just specific for Connecticut. These were FMA, our nationwide grants, so we were really lucky to get these.
Thanks. And really, thank you for all you do for these grants.
Thank you, and thank you for helping.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Julie. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8E.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request authorizing the acceptance of the attached FY 2014 Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Agreement, number EMB-2015-FM-E002, in the amount of $105,500 for the elevation of the residence, residential structure located at 34 Deerfield Ave, and to authorize the mayor, finance director, director of community development, and city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request authorizing the acceptance of an attached FY 2014 Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Agreement, number EMB-2015-FM-E002, in the amount of $202,610 for the elevation of the residential structure located at 3 Lawrence Court, and to authorize the mayor, finance director, director of community development, and the city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Julie Nash. Good evening. I'm just interested to know, this one is significantly more than the two before. Is that, is there a reason for that? Is it the size of the house?
Sure. We've seen them from 80,000 to almost 400,000. It depends on the size of the house, the age of the house, where they're located. They really range in that, between the 80 and 400.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Hi, Julie.
Hi.
Are they all at the same height, or does the height vary with each one of these projects?
The height varies. It depends on, it's a one-story home, two-story home, three-story home, so it depends on the original elevation.
Also, in location, does that have anything to do with it, as far as where they're located?
Sure. Well, each home has its own flood base elevation, and it has to be either 12, 13, 14. If there's, there's a couple different zones that we have in Milford. There's a VE zone, and then there's a AE zone, and they both have their own set of zone requirements.
And height is according to the particular zone? So they can be, they have to be of different heights?
Correct. Just, there's different flood base elevations, which means the base.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8G.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached memorandum of understanding between the city of Milford and the Milford Transit District for commuter parking at 145 High Street, 0 Railroad Ave, 54/322/2B, and 0 River Street, 54/322/4A.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to whoever. How many spaces are there in that parking lot?
Mr. Chairman, through you, our Public Works Director is here, but I believe there's approximately 100 and... I was gonna say approximately 120.
Good evening. There's 110. There are some that are reserved for the probationary office of that 110.
And, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gorman, this does not include the front lot that abuts River Street? This is just the rear parcel?
The new spot, the new parking lot?
Yes, correct.
Now, just a couple of follow-ups, Mr. Chairman. It says residents will be charged an annual fee of $350, paying by check, and then $365, paying by credit card. Do we really need to have two different fees?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gorman, this is the relationship that we have with the Milford Transit District, and Henry Jadik, who is the Director of the Transit District, is here. There's a cost that they bear. Right now, there is a pretty extensive wait list to get parking at Milford Transit District. At one point, it was 700 people deep. I think it's shrunk a little bit, but there's still a pretty extensive list. Now that includes all folks, both Milford residents and folks from out of town. What we're doing here is, we wanna utilize this parking lot to a much greater degree than we do presently. We are teaming up with Milford Transit to utilize only their list of Milford residents, so that folks that want a pretty good rate to park at the train station, that have been on their waitlist now for, you know, three, four, five years. I think the average wait time on their waitlist was about five years. He would have the exact information. But people really desire to park right at the train station. There really is no better spot than this lot. So it's a benefit for the residents of Milford who take the train each day. Just from that train station alone, we have 5,000 people taking the train to and from Milford. So it's very well utilized. It is good for us, because this agreement, Milford Transit will now be responsible for not only the rear lot, but the front lot where the building is. We were not making money on the parking. We were losing money because of the cost of the parking attendant, as well as the cost of the maintenance, the ice removal, the snow removal. Milford Transit is gonna take all that on, not just for the backlot, but for the front lot as well, as well as provide liability. So it's really a great benefit for the city of Milford. One, it takes all those expenses off of the backs of the city of Milford. The city of Milford is making revenue from the buildings and the rentals. The probation office alone pays about $100,000 in rent. So that's where the revenue is being generated by the city of Milford. The costs that we've been bearing have really been associated with parking and the maintenance of the parking facility. The Transit District has agreed to take that on, because they have customers that wanna use it, Milford people, so it benefits the community, because it's going to, you know, better allow folks that wanna use those spaces to utilize those spaces, people that are residents of the city of Milford and take the train each day.
Okay, one more comment, sorry. So you anticipate selling all these to Milford residents and not to out-of-town residents?
So the agreement that we, presently, we have monthly customers. There's probably 20 or 30 monthly customers that presently utilize that lot. We are gonna allow those existing monthly customers, whether they live in Milford or don't live in Milford, to continue to utilize that spot. But for all of the new customers, the ones that are on Milford Transit's list, they have to be Milford residents.
And I go, one more follow-up, sorry. The signs that are down there, and I talked to the Public Works Director, they say that you have to have a sticker or have to be a, have a parking sticker anytime. There's no, there's no time for weekends where they can park there for free. Can we get those signs changed? Because the way it looks now, that you have to have a permit to park there at any time.
We'll take another look at the signs, sure. Again, the front lot, where the building is with the convenience store, the bakery, that lot is all marked out for two-hour parking or parking for those stores that are in that building facility.
Right. I'm just talking about the parking behind there, because I saw the signs, and we were concerned with getting towed away.
Yeah, we'll take another look at the signs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Director Staley. Will there be some kind of verification process for people to approve residency and on renewals as well, so that we know this is really going to Milford residents? And do you know what that procedure might be?
We're a very trusting organization. But no, that would be Henry Jadik's responsibility. He would, you know, check and make sure the people that are coming in. And I'm sure he'd be more than happy to come up and explain this process.
When the permits are given out or are sold, required to produce their car registrations indicates their address. indicates their address, their mailing address is where we mail the, the requests, you know, for the permits. There's about 15 people now that are out of town. They were already grandfathered in because they were parking there monthly before, and right now, we're up to about 82 spaces that are full. And we're not gonna lose money. Hopefully, we'll break even. I mean, Santa Claus isn't coming to town.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Henry.
Hi.
So I guess the expectation is, there is no longer going to be a parking attendant onsite?
We have a parking attendant onsite, not directly at that site. There's one across the street in a daily parking lot. That lot is gonna strictly be by permit sticker. If you don't have a sticker, you're not gonna be parking there. And after a relative short period of time, we'll be a little lenient in the, in the beginning, give out some notes on cars and things, not to be too vicious to tow right away, but they will be towed.
And just a follow-up, Mr. Chairman. And I'm hearing that, I guess, if you can clarify, there will be no cash accepted for payment?
No. It's either a check or a credit card.
And presently, are we still, do we have that property manager handling this, or have you already taken this over?
We're prepared to take it over.
Okay, thank you, Henry.
And the signs do indicate that there's no parking, that parking is free on the weekends, from Fri- Friday evening till Monday morning.
I'll make sure I park on the weekend.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, hi, Henry.
Hi.
I guess, I, my question was gonna go in the line of a, an attendant needing to be there all of the time, because really, there's no daily usage of that parking lot. Is that true, or was?
Not the intention, no.
Okay, because I was looking at the idea of the concept of kiosks, like other cities are doing, and which we should do down the beach and all of that. But anyway, but anyway, we, with the TOD, with our Transit Orient District that we're working on in our community, that's gonna take a different kind of, change the landscape there.
The memorandum of understanding indicates that it'll be a yearly agreement, that even before a year is up, either party is able to terminate. And, and that's, of course, pointed toward the development, the prospective development there. And all the people that were sold permits, we made it very clear to them, this is a temporary situation. It could end in one year, two years, two and a half years, we don't know. And at that time, there may not be parking there. They'll be put back on our waitlist, but they'll be put back in the head of, on the top of the waitlist. So as soon as other spaces become available in the other lots, they'd have the opportunity to get them. It's a little, it was a little complicated, a little tough to, to explain, but that, that's actually the situation. So when a developer or the city, whatever happens at that parcel, if, if that lot is going to be something else besides parking, and no longer parking, then they know that we're gonna have to, you know, go to a different situation, go to a different arrangement for them to park.
Thank you. I just hope that in the future, with our parking situations, that we can go to these, the new, this new concept of kiosks in, in the city, so that we can make things a little, hopefully a little easier.
This is a pretty simple system, and it's done that way, you know, to be a little more economic, not to charge the Milford residents, you know, an outrageous fee, that just, hopefully, to charge enough to cover with the average winter, one winter, and not average winter the next winter. That, that's what really drives the whole cost down there, is, you know, whether you have a bad winter or not.
I'm just talking about overall concept, conceptual piece of, of parking attendants and kiosks, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay.
Any more discussion on the motion? Thank you, Henry. No more questions to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this point, I will entertain a motion to reorder the agenda, to move Item 12A, Report of Ordinance Committee next to, on, on agenda, so that we can vote on the bonding ordinances coming up. Do I have a second? There's a motion and a second to reorder the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Frank Smith, 12A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ordinance Committee of the Milford Board of Aldermen met earlier this evening to consider a recommendation forwarded with a affirmative recommendation by the Finance Board, that is, an ordinance appropriating $3,300,000 for the Gulf Street Road Construction Project, and authorizing the issuance of $3,300,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. This is the capital project, which will be restoring and repairing the roads along Gulf Street from Cherry Street down to the Gulf Pond area, including sidewalk continuations. This is also, as the Mayor pointed out, covered in a low sub grant through the Federal Housing Administration and through the Council of Governments. And this is, this grant is going to be reimbursing us for 100% of this appropriation through the Department of Transportation. The only portion of this is the design component, which I believe we, we voted on and has already been paid for last year. This ordinance was considered and was unanimously recommended with an affirmative recommendation to the full board. I would like to make that, Mr. Chairman, as a motion.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mayor Blake, just for a point of clarification, we have a question from our caucus. The design that was already voted on, that was 100% reimbursable as well, correct?
No. The construction component of this grant is 100% reimbursable. The cost to the city is approximately 10% of the overall cost of the project, which is the design. The city paid for the design. We paid for it out of a, a state grant, but we paid for the design.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this point, we will return to Agenda Item 8H. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding a cash advance for the Gulf Street construction grant-funded project.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8I.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request pursuant to CGS 8-24 for acquisition of easements for the installation of sidewalks and roadway improvements, abutting for 60 Gulf Street, and to authorize the Mayor, Public Works Director, City Attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said easements.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to the City Attorney, Attorney Bertram, is this request based on where we need to connect the sidewalk, where there is no sidewalk, and we're asking for an easement to make it one continuous sidewalk?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Ginatazio. As I understand it, there's only one particular area where we need an easement, and it's basically where there is no sidewalk. It's right around by the corner, and the, the property owner has written us, he's had conversations with Mr. Saley, he's authorized it, but mechanically, we need the meets and bounds to be done by the engineer. So we're asking for your approval to do that one area for the easement, which a property owner has assented to. And so it's one specific area. Maybe Mr. Saley can give you a little more specifics as to where it is, but there is no sidewalk existing there, but it will be connecting sidewalks.
Thank you.
There is a sidewalk. It's jogging the sidewalk over. It's the la- the last house before you get to the Gulf Street Bridge on Gulf Pond. In order for us to, you know, move the road over a little bit and have a, a nice pedestrian pathway, this is the ideal location for a sidewalk. Again, there's other alternatives if this didn't work, but this would be to make an ideal pedestrian pathway, and again, make the road a little bit safer.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Blake, just one other thing. You mentioned some kind of an area along the marsh side where it can, it's gonna be utilized as viewing. Can you just share that with the members of the board as well?
Ideally, and again, this is contingent upon deep permits, Department of Environmental Protection permits. We would likely, like to make the, the curved section of Gulf Street before you get to the Gulf Street Bridge into a, a greater viewing area with a, a little bit more of a sidewalk that goes right up to Gulf Pond. Again, it's gonna be contingent upon permitting from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to, to Chris. Does this mean that Gulf Street will now have sidewalks on both sides of the streets all the way down to the beach?
Actually, no, they won't have sidewalks on both sides. Our goal is to run from, install a new sidewalk from Dock Road going towards New Haven Ave., all the way down, I think, to Carrington is the, the street location, right around there. On the other side, as Mayor Blake was explaining, where the, where the sidewalk is really a pinch point in, on that one house on the, on the beach, around the, the pond, we're looking to mush, push that sidewalk closer to the house, but also go out into the, the marsh area a little bit with deep approval. We haven't gotten deep approval yet, so it'll make it an easier pedestrian, a little bit safer, we believe.
Thank you. One more question. This might be directed to the Mayor. Do we have any plans on taking down the, the old bridge at Gulf Beach?
We do. In fact, we have an application that we're finishing up right now for a, a permit to the, the State Port Authority. Our, they're offering a program called the SHIP Program. It's an acronym for Small Harbor Improvement Program, and we have a grant application in to utilize those funds. It's gonna be several hundred thousand dollars just to remove that. And we are going to replace it with something that allows access for fishermen.
Thank you very much.
Is there any, is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Saley. Agenda... Next on the agenda is Item Number Nine, There Is No New Business. Next will be Agenda Item Number 10, We Have No Budget Memo Transfers. Moving on to Agenda Number 11, Moving On To Refunds. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of $88,001.73.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees. Are there any reports of any standing committees? Alderman Ginatazio.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I can ask Alderman Bevan, I know that he attends the MGAT committee meetings. I was just interested to know if, I heard there was a contract for the, the personnel that actually produces the MGAT videos, and I didn't know if you had any information that you'd like to share with the board in regards to that.
Getting back to Alderman Ginatazio, I am not the liaison to MGAT. I do, attend their meetings, and they're under discussion now with a contract with, with their only employee, and that's a personnel-money matter that is outside my, let's say, expertise. And I believe that at the last meeting, the employee and the Chairman of the, of MGAT are to get together and try to get a consensus of where to go from here. That was the last I've heard from the meeting. I do not know if they've gotten together and talked about it. It seems that it's a money thing, and it's a personnel thing, that I'm like in between, but I have nothing to report on that. It's a combination of buying equipment, paying salaries. Some of it will have to do with our budget that we're gonna be passing in a few months. Some of it has to do with the grant that the MGAT gets, which may or may not be cut. It's a, it's a, it's a big ball of twine right now, and I'm hoping that the, the Chairman and the employee can get together and finalize a, a certain amount of money that is acceptable to both sides.
Thank you, Alderman Bevan. And through you, Mr. Chairman, maybe if, the City Attorney, Bertram. I'm curious to know, has there always been a contract in place for the MGAT person?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Ginatazio. I'm not aware of any specific contract. There's been verbal agreements. This is, I don't want to get too much into contract negotiations in this public forum, because they are, to my knowledge, still ongoing. There's been a few wrinkles. And, and not to be too technical, it's, the current person who films is not an employee of the city. That's one of the catches. It's not an employee, it's a independent contractor. The MGAT pays to provide that service. So, because there's obviously some things that come along with being an employee of the city, and trying to avoid those. So negotiations, I know our conversations with the MGAT representative from the city with my office, have been going on last, last couple weeks. We've been negotiating with the other side. And to my knowledge, there is no resolution, but I was not point person, so I can follow up and, and report back to you, Alderman Ginatazio. Alderman Bevan, I'm happy to do that. Impires you if there's any developments that occurred since I've last been briefed on that.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I, I would appreciate that, and I just hope that, you know, there could be a resolution. I know that the person that's currently doing it, has been doing it for some time now, and has been very effective, so I was just, wanted to follow up on that.
Yeah, no, the, no doubt, the person who's done, has done an exceptional job. I think it's, it's literally just trying to stay within their budget and, and reach immediate minds.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since it's, we brought this up in the report from standing committees. Like Alderman Bevan, I am not a liaison to MGAT, but I did, at the request of one of my constituents in the 3rd District, a former member of the MGAT Board, attend the MGAT meeting with Alderman Bevan. And it is an interesting situation there, in that, as the Mayor, as the City Attorney correctly pointed out, the operator for MGAT is the only really paid employee, but is not an employee of the city. He's an independent contractor, has been doing this for about seven or eight years now. There is a disparity in terms of the way these, these government-access television entities are funded. For instance, the Town of Orange appropriates somewhere between 75 and 90,000 for their government-access TV in a much smaller market. As you know from our budget hearings, the City of Milford funds, the Mayor very generously increased the proposed allocation to MGAT from 16,000 to 19,000 to cover some of the equipment. But the difference in terms of service and in terms of the sophistication of the equipment is pronounced, meaning that the City of Milford has to rely more on the human element, namely, our one technical operator, who is presumably here tonight, comes down quite often to film a lot of the different events. As the Mayor said, as the City Attorney said, this is a negotiation that's ongoing, so we can't really go into it here. But I do want to make a point that, at least in terms of the way MGAT is so structured now, it is a labor-intensive type of endeavor. I do think that MGAT serves a very useful function- I do think that MGAT serves a very useful function. When I was on this board years ago, I remember when the resolution creating MGAT was introduced back in 1999. Since then, MGAT has transformed the way this and all the other city elected bodies operate. We don't have reporters here anymore, but it's a very important and useful function to the city. And I believe that it probably deserves more funding than it gets. It's not a good time to bring that up, but I do want to make it clear from my meetings, I would like to probably talk to the chairman of the MGAT Board, but to try to facilitate some agreement between our technical contractor and the MGAT Board to everyone's satisfaction so he can continue in his position and that MGAT can continue working and perhaps expanding its services to the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Smith and Alderman Bevan for their information about MGAT. Is there any more standing committee reports? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just Permanent School and Facility Building Committee. We are just getting ready to put on some new roofs on Live Oaks School and a couple other schools that we've already done. So a lot of these things are happening during the summer. And West Shore Middle School is having a new addition. I just hope, and I, and I just, you know, we talk about the solar panels tonight on roofs and buildings and, you know, what is happening and hopefully with the Board of Education, they can come through and give us some type of five, 10-year plan. I know we have many schools under a population that is really low for a school to maintain its, its, its ability to serve the community. So I, I think these are kinds of things that we need to, to talk about and think about so that if we don't put new roofs on buildings that are going to be closed in a year or so, and remembering that we still, if we get reimbursement from those buildings, that we're still paying back that reimbursement within a pro-rated rate, but the fact is, if we get the money from the state, nothing is free. And so if we close a school, we got to reimburse, and the reimbursement goes back. So I just hope that there's some good decisions being made. Our permit, our ability to negate something is not there. It's the fact that we are given the marching orders to put roofs on and get contracts and whatever, so we don't make that decision whether it goes on a particular building or not. So, but I think being prudent and being, having common sense, that we need to look into that idea of not putting roofs on buildings that are going to be closed in the very, very near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Is there any more standing committee reports? Hearing none, let's move on to liaison reports. Is there any more reports from any special committees at this time? Seeing none. I'd like, I, I didn't realize that he left the audience already, but was going to thank Lisa Farrow and the members of the PLTI for attending our meeting tonight, but I think most of them have left already. But anyways, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Just want to remind everyone, we have a meeting here for the Board of Aldermen Wednesday at 7 o'clock. Public Caring will be for the Board of Education side of the budget and the city side of the budget. Thank you.